Lord, we thank you for this day that you've given us to be able to gather together. We thank you for the freedom we have in this country to express ourselves and to govern, and freedom to worship. Just thank you for those blessings. Thank you for this city, Lord, and the place you've given us to live. I pray that you'll be with the commissioners as they make decisions that impact the lives of others. Just give them wisdom and guidance each and every day. And just thank you for the blessings we have. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance on three, one, two, three.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Councilmember Boges.
Here.
Councilmember Purdon.
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Here.
Councilmember Folic.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Okay, it's a mayor's welcome. You're welcome to come to the City Hall. We have an open government. This is a republic where we, the people, elect people to represent us. And so we've been all elected to represent the people of Bonita Springs. So you all are here, and the people at home are watching on TV. Thank you for your time. Approval of the agenda. You have a second?
Second.
Any comments? Call please.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Here.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Okay, public comment on the agenda items. There we go.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, and city staff. For the record, my name is Jim Magnus, resident of Bonita Springs since 1990. I'd like to comment on consent agenda, item D, Halloween in the Park. Great event. Thank you, Bonita Springs Council and staff, your support in bringing events to Riverside Park. Keep up the good work. On another thought, City Council had appointed me last year to the Economic Recovery Branch for Resiliently Task Force. While the duties for that are now over, I'm compelled to lobby to support one very important initiative our branch and other branches recommended in the Rails to Trails project to complete the Yarborough Trail in Lee County to the south, including Astero and Bonita Springs. I do not understand the politics to keep the Rails to Trails project moving forward. However, it looks to me like Bonita and Astero have committed and are all in on the project. But Lee County has yet to put its full support behind the project, from what I can tell. We have a short window to fund this project in what I would consider government time. My ask today, please take some time to talk about it today. I think the Council can agree that Bonita Springs has arguably the best capable, responsible, and hardworking city staff in the state of Florida. If appropriate, please ask or task them today to work with Astero and Lee County to determine the next steps in keeping this project moving forward. Lastly, it would be nice, if time allows, to get updates on a couple of the other projects that the City Council has approved, such as the Banyan Tree Project and the DPZ reimagining of the project downtown and the city-owned properties. Again, thank you so much for your time. We appreciate all that you do for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else? Consent agenda. Move to approve. Second. Any comments? Call please.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Okay, presentation. Grady Minor, Ellie, please introduce us.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Ellie McEwen, for a member of your Public Works Department, sorry. I would like to introduce you to Daniel Flynn. He is with Grady Minor. He is the consultant that the city hired to design the improvements that he's going to show you today for Rosemary Drive. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel.
So before I get into the presentation, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity this morning to discuss a really great project. My name is Daniel Flynn. I'll be the engineer record and project manager for the Rosemary Drive Stormwater and Multi-Use Pathway Engineering Design Project. I'm going through the agenda this morning. So we're going to discuss the project background, discuss the goals with the project, the different concepts and alternatives that we presented at the community meeting. We're going to talk about that public meeting and the feedback we received from the community. And then ultimately, we're here this morning requesting your approval to move forward with the 60% design of one of the alternatives. So a little background about Rosemary Drive. So it is a city-maintained local roadway with a posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour. The pedestrian facilities, so if you're looking at the image, the drone picture on the top right, so that is looking to the west. So the left side of the roadway would be the south side of the roadway. The existing pedestrian facilities as it exists today, there's a pedestrian sidewalk extending the entire limits from Old 41 to Vega Bond Way. And then on the north side of the street, there is an existing sidewalk for the easternmost portion of the project between Streetsboro and Vega Bond Way. We did review the accidents, and this was between 2018 and 2023. And we did identify 41 different accidents within our project limits. It's important to note that 46% of these accidents happened at Old 41 and Rosemary Drive at that signalized intersection. But we also did note that there was five accidents involving bike and peds. So this was important. And another image on the screen, you can see that's kind of zoomed in. You could see where pedestrians are using the north side of the roadway right now to traverse along the shoulder, which obviously, that's not a dedicated pedestrian facility. So it kind of reiterates the need for additional facilities for the peds and bikes along Rosemary Some additional information, so along Rosemary Drive, we do have two different right-of-way widths. The majority of the corridor on the bottom left-hand drone picture is representing the 60-foot right-of-way section. So this is from Old 41 to Streetsboro. And then we do have a short run on the far eastern of the project where we do have a 100-foot right-of-way, and this would be from Vega Bond Way to Streetsboro. And we do have one signalized existing intersection, and this is at Old 41 and Rosemary. And the drainage system as it exists today is a open drainage system, which simply means that the stormwater is conveyed and she flows off the roadway into a roadside swell network, which is interconnected with the pipes that ultimately conveys the water to the discharge point. Going through the different goals of the project, so obviously, we want to improve bicycle and ped connectivity. You know, that first slide where we looked at the different areas where the peds are currently utilizing that are not dedicated pedestrian facilities, so we want to make sure we provide that connectivity for the north side of the neighborhood to come to the south side of the neighborhood. And that goes into the second bullet point of making sure that we're providing safe pedestrian crossings along the corridor. We're going to be looking at drainage and stormwater updates. That would be going from the open swell system to a closed drainage system. So this would be a curb and gutter system, which will convey the water to stormwater inlets and then bring the water underground. Roadside safety improvements, the pavement condition. I'm sure everybody on Council has driven Rosemary Drive, and there's some pretty large fatigue cracking along the corridor, so we want to make sure we're rehabilitating the roadway with this project. Lighting will be very important, and this will be specifically for the intersection crossings where we're crossing peds. We want to make sure that the lighting is sufficient to make it safe so motorists do see the pedestrians. Streetscape and landscape improvements will be included, and then also speed control of the motorists, which will make it safer, not only the motorists but also the bike and So going through the different concepts and the different alternatives that I'm going to present later on in the presentation are specific to the intersections and how we're crossing the pedestrians over Rosemary Drive. Between those intersections, both alternatives are consistent. So on the far-left side is the 60-foot right-of-way section, so this is from Old 41 to Streetsboro. You can see we have two 10-foot wide travel lanes. We have that curb and gutter system, which is going to convey that stormwater underground. We have a six-foot wide sidewalk on the left side of that cross-section, which would be the north side of Rosemary Drive. And then we have a 10-foot wide shared use path on the south side. And as you can see, there is landscaping and lighting improvements. And then if we're comparing that to the 100-foot right-of-way section, so this is from Streetsboro to Vega Bond Way. So we are keeping the corridor consistent with the two 10-foot wide travel lanes with the curb and gutter. We also will be consistent with maintaining the six-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of the road and the 10-foot wide shared use path on the south side. The opportunity, though, within the 100-foot right-of-way section, there's a lot more green space now, so it does give us the opportunity for a more robust landscaping plan or potentially to provide some additional water quality within that additional green space. So this is, I'm looking at the concepts from a bird's eye or a plan view. So as you can see, the 60-foot right-of-way section, you can see the addition of the sidewalk on the north side and then the larger 10-foot wide shared use path on the south side. And then the major changes would be coming within that 100-foot right-of-way section. So we're removing that median island to make sure the corridor is consistent all the way down from Old 41 to Vega Bond Way. And again, you can see the additional green space that we have because the right-of-way width does increase from 60 to 100 feet. So talking through the different alternatives, so alternative one, and again, this is for how we're crossing the pedestrians in the north-south side of Rosemary Drive. So this would be a raised crosswalk. So this is a vertical traffic calming method. As motorists approach the crosswalk, they would have to slow down to go over the crosswalk. One benefit with this is with the pedestrians, it does elevate the pedestrian, so it makes the motorists more aware that the pedestrian is within the road while also slowing down the motorists to make it safer. And then alternative two would be the pedestrian refuge island. So this is now a horizontal deflection for traffic calming. So what happens here is because the island is introduced at the intersections, the vehicles do have to traverse around that island, so they would have to slow down. And this also allows the pedestrians to cross one lane at a time by providing them a refuge island in the middle. One downside about this alternative, or more of a challenge, is if you do have a lot of vehicles that pull trailers, we've seen on other projects that as they go around that island, their trailers do clip that curb, so it could potentially be into a maintenance So after we developed the alternatives, we had a robust public outreach plan, which included flyers, hand-delivering notices to all the residents along the corridor, utilizing the city's public outreach. And we had a public meeting on June 25th at City Hall. We had 11 attendees stop by. It was an open-house format where we had a large roll plot in the middle of the room, and what that allowed us to do was take the community in the specific area, whether it was their house or maybe their friend's house, of what they wanted to look at and how the different alternatives affected that specific property. And what we were looking for was feedback on the different alternatives. Again, alternative one was the raised crosswalk, and alternative two was the pedestrian refuge island. The items we presented at the community meeting, so we had a landscape palette, which showed the different species of landscaping that would be utilized for the project to give them additional information on what that final product would look like once the project is complete. We had two 3D renderings detailing the two different alternatives. On the bottom-left-hand side, we had additional information for a cross-section and plan view of the different concepts between the intersections. This also provided a little more insight on the different type of landscaping and maybe how it'd be separated along the corridor. And then that bottom-right-hand image, so that is the roll plot that we presented. This had three different views, so we had the existing conditions on the top. We had alternative one in the middle and alternative two on the bottom. So this allowed them to see the specific differences for both alternatives when compared to the existing conditions. And the input we received from the community, so it was overwhelming for alternative one. We had seven votes versus one vote for alternative two. There was a comment on the vote for alternative two that there were some drainage concerns. And I do want to note that the drainage would be taken care of with both of these alternatives. There are some different types of curb and gutter with channels that allow us to make sure the water is conveyed and not held up with the raised crosswalk, so the drainage would be taken care of on both alternatives. And we're here this morning requesting for approval of design of alternative one, which is the raised crosswalk, and allow us to move forward with the 60% plans and ultimately the final design. Thank you.
Are there flashing lights at these crosswalks?
So that would be reviewed at the 60% design stage.
Might as well. Won't hurt the people, maybe keep them from getting run over.
Yeah, it certainly does bring more attention to the intersection.
Now, this canal on the north part of Rosemary Park, is that stagnant water, it's laser, it flows when we have a big rainstorm, and otherwise, it's just a snake-infested mosquito habitat. What are we going to do with that?
That's not part of this project, Mr. Mayor. I think you're talking about Lightner Creek or Lightner Canal.
Yeah, it goes under Old 41.
Apologize, I misspoke. That portion is actually Rosemary Creek. It's a channelized portion of Rosemary. It does convey water from the eastern parts of the city, northeastern parts to the Imperial River. But it is not part of this project's scope, no sir.
But that's where the drainage from this project is going, right?
Yes, that's where the drainage already goes from this roadway. So this design will utilize the existing drainage pattern and prove it where it can, but that's beyond the scope of this pedestrian safety improvement.
How many crosswalks, pedestrian crosswalks, do we have in there?
Daniel?
So we are proposing five different crosswalks, and these were identified, and we had a traffic study done. So this was the areas where we saw the most pedestrians crossing. And then there's also, as far as the raised crosswalk, you want to make sure that you're not providing too much of a distance between the crosswalks. So we're adhering to the national standards with the separation while also reviewing where the pedestrians are crossing. So there's five right now.
Okay. Yes, Chris? Daniel, could you comment on the seven policy votes? What was the most important aspect of this to those people?
So I think the majority of them noted that the pedestrian improvements was necessary just because the people that are currently using Rosemary Drive, there were some concerns with e-bikes. But I think ultimately, it came down to, if we're looking specifically at alternative one versus alternative two, we heard concerns of allowing pedestrians to stay within the road, and there was some nervousness there. And they thought that the raised crosswalks provide a better way to slow down cars because it's a vertical treatment.
They thought it was more safe.
Correct, yes.
Is there existing lighting? Is there existing lighting on the road currently?
There's existing FPNL power pole lighting, so it's typically at every intersection. So it is, it is streetlights. It's on the north side of the road. As you see here in this design, they'll include decorative lighting on the south side of the road.
Be more lighting. Yes?
Daniel, thank you for this, by the way. Question, as far as speed controls, are the raised crosswalks the only speed controls that will be added at the end of this project?
Correct, yes.
Is there anything just for everyone here that you could go and see now that's already in process where we've got a road with multiple raised crosswalks?
Like, Daniel probably doesn't know that answer.
But you do.
The roadway where you could see that, public roadway, is Maddox Lane in between Cockleshell and Paradise Road. However, you will not be able to connect to Paradise Road because that's under construction currently, but you could go over, there's two speed tables up there and an eight-foot pathway on the south side of the road that we constructed a few years ago.
We don't have a problem with the fire department on these raised?
No, these are, if you may be aware, the fire department has significant issue, and we do not allow them on public roadways with speed bumps because of the interruption that they provide to, you know, if they're trying to transport folks or their own equipment. But the speed tables work with their emergency services.
That's good. Any other comments? Motion to approve alternative one.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Boges.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Okay, city attorney, you have anything for us today?
I have nothing.
Oh, very good. City manager items.
Thank you at this time. I'll have our finance director come forward. We have the presentation of the June financial report and discussion of fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget. Good morning.
Good morning.
So who's going to bring that up for us? And today, we're going to review the June monthly, June monthly financial report.
Your name is Janet?
Excuse me?
Your name?
Oh, thank you. Lisa Robertson, your Director of Financial and Administrative Services.
Good morning.
Good morning. So we're going to review your June financial report, which you have three months remaining from this report to our fiscal year end, and then we're going to present to you some of our continuing discussion items about our budget as we move toward adoption. Our first slide here is our general fund revenue. This is a pie, a pie graph of all of our revenue. This is our regular recurring revenue. Again, we have three months remaining, and this is pretty healthy, diverse revenue for an entity such as ourselves. Our next slide is our general fund revenue. This is our, again, a regular recurring revenue. What we do for you each month is we show you current fiscal year-to-date and the immediately preceding fiscal year-to-date. We feel so strongly that this helps us identify trends, both positive and areas to watch, and it helps us really identify and make sure when we compare ourselves to the state, you know, or what things we're seeing here locally, you know, or the economists getting our area correct. And with the state, they typically do. One thing I wanted to call to your attention here, we did receive some affordable housing monies from a developer in the form of bonus density. That is in your budget already. We knew it was coming. It's in your budget. It is a restricted revenue fund. It's not regular recurring, but it lacks a different place to sit, so it is in your Affordable Housing Trust Fund and in your budget. Our general fund expenditures, these are our regular recurring operating expenditures. As you can see, the first row of data, current fiscal year-to-date as compared with the immediately preceding fiscal year-to-date. As we've been talking about all year and not unique to Bonita or to Florida as a whole, we are still experiencing some inflationary trends, and that is primarily what you see here when you do see increases. Restricted revenue. This is from a monthly financial statement. This is my favorite slide today. It shows us a couple of different things. The first data column there, building permit fees, and then the park impact fees, which is the third one down, and the road impact fees. Those are all driven by new construction, generally speaking. What we have seen in the recent months is an upward trend in those areas. That means that more people are walking into community development and pulling a new construction building permit. It's a good thing. These numbers, we have brought, incorporated them into your budget, so these projections are already in your budget. But the neat thing to realize here is that park impact fees and road impacts, you see those. Road impact fees had a pretty significant spike in the last couple of months. That was commercial property. And see, a commercial property is not subject to park impact fees. So for the road impact fees, we have had some, over last year, we've had a significant amount of commercial properties pull permits and pay their park, their road impact fees. The last line item, I want to call, last two rather, I want to call to your attention, the state shared revenue and the local option fuel tax. Those are taxes that are collected by the state, assessed across the state, and we get our proportionate share. You can see these trends are trending down a little. We have been watching the state economists quarterly when they look at the revenue. This is something they projected, and this is something we saw in our trend, not a significant downward movement, but your budget does account for that. So just rest assured, we have made sure we've incorporated those trends and the data we received from the state in your budget numbers. The next two slides are our cash balances. We show you all three years of snapshot in time as of June 30th for our cash balances. Now, while we're so proud of these, this accumulation of funds have been prioritized and allocated to fund your capital improvement project. So as these amounts grow, that enables us to reduce the need for debt to fund our capital improvement program. We like to call it pay-as-you-go. So we set aside the money, we prioritize the capital improvement projects, and we allocate and fund them from these amounts. And these are, again, incorporated in your budget draft. This is a continuation of those slides. These are the restricted, some of the restricted revenues that we're accumulating. You'll see there, the last one on this slide, the last data point, I like there, funds reserved for debt. Those are our partnership with Lee County for our downtown redevelopment improvements. As you all know, Lee County just contributed, and they've fully funded, they're part of the partnership with that inter-local agreement. So that money is sitting there in the bank, restricted to fund our debt service as we move forward. So we're going to be paying that down. And then we also have in there the $2 million for the emergency loan that we received from the state. Again, we deposited it in the bank, and if we do not need it, a year later, we will be paying it back, and it is rent interest-free for that one year. So it's sitting there in that.
When's that year run out?
December, sir. December, December? Yes, sir. And we've got that, we'll populate that in your budget, and we'll make sure that gets taken care of.
Very good.
Thank you. Now on to, we just have a few slides for budget discussion, and then we're going to open it up to council. Each time we talk about the budget, we'd like to give you all your remaining budget calendar. Today, we're here to continue your budget discussions and to receive direction or move the budget along. What we decide today would be in your next draft, Wednesday, September 4th, will be our tentative budget hearing. Now, the last two meetings in September, they're called tentative and final by Florida statutes, they have to be after 5:01 or on a Saturday. So we have picked 5:30, so that means, and we've lined them up with your regular city council meetings, so that anyone who may show up at 9 o'clock regularly for our 18th meeting, please wait and come at 5:30. So we're going to have our budget hearings on those two times, September 4th, Wednesday, Wednesday, the 18th, at 5:30, and immediately thereafter, we're going to hold our regular city council meetings. So on Wednesday, September 4th, at the tentative budget hearing, you will include a mileage rate vote. That is the second of three mileage rate votes. September 18th at 5:30 will be your final mileage rate vote. We do, each time we talk about the budget, we want to make sure and call to everyone's attention and restate the strategic priorities that have been adopted by council are listed here, and that is what your draft budget is adopted upon. And you will see those categories of projects for that summarized quite frequently, and we're very proud of that. State revenue projections. By federal law, we have to present our initial budget to you in July, excuse me. So we present your budget in July. That includes drafts for all of your revenue as required. The state economists do not release their revenue projections until late September, excuse me, late July, August, and now we're still waiting, at this point, you know, end of August, we're still waiting on one. Now, that being said, we watch them every, every time they issue some reports, so we believe our drafts are in line with what they say, but we watch that. Because if we need to make an adjustment, we make it through our budget process from September. But what this slide is telling you is so far, we do not have any adjustments to our budgeted revenue amount, which is a good thing. We do have estimates already for our half-cent sales tax, our municipal revenue sharing, and our communication services tax. So those, the states have issued the estimates for, and our budget estimates are in line. And the local option fuel tax, while the state hasn't issued their projections, we do feel that when they come out between now and our next meeting, probably, hopefully, they'll be in line with our budget, too. be in line with our budget too, again, because we're seeing our collection trend. We watch monthly, we're watching their state trends, and we are fairly consistently. Um, the neat thing, not so neat, but when fuel taxes go up, um, actually, uh, consumers reju- adjust their use, so they reduce their capacity. So we actually, in times statewide, historically, when fuel prices go up, we see a slight reduction in usage and a slight reduction in fuel tax, um, as the consumer modifies their behavior based upon the, the cost of fuel. This slide, um, outlines a couple of, of items that we heard discussed at the last meeting. We wanted to make sure, we highlighted to, those to you all. Um, and then we were also asked in our one-on-one budget meetings that we have with each council member, we were asked to give some examples of some real estate taxes for you all to consider. Uh, again, you have your millage rate votes, um, the two September meetings and, um, two September meetings. So we were asked to give these millage rate, um, um, examples here, and here they are for you with respect to the city's revenue. And then here are examples for those exact same millage rate votes and how they would impact various values of homes. Um, this is the, uh, Save Our Homes, which this year will be increasing at 3%. Again, this is data for you all to consider as you move to adoption in September. And with that, I will open it up to discussion, um, with council and take direction.
And just as a reminder, in your packets, you also have a copy of the proposed capital improvements plan as well, so if there's any discussion or, um, recommendations on that, we're, we're open, we're open to hear those as well today, too. We just done included in the presentation.
Yes.
Now, we had a, uh, big increase in, uh, uh, impact fees for July, uh, for July. Are you familiar with that? It's like 2.8 million?
Yes, sir. And that number, we, we double-checked, and that is in line with the projections you have in your budget. In your budget each year, while we start in July, we project the revenue you're gonna receive between July and September, and that, the collections on that slide that we're hearing right now, they're in your budget. That money's already in your budget, and it's rolled forward in your road impact fees to fund your capital projects.
I see we have, uh, a surplus in our general fund.
Yes.
Slide that you showed.
We, we typically do, and we typically, council has elected to utilize that. It gets, it has to legally pay debt service if we have some, and we do have some remaining, and then it also is elected to be utilized to pay for our capital improvement projects. Some of our capital improvement projects, sir, um, don't have any restricted funds that are available, um, so the general fund has to help with that. And when we do grant projects, if we're required to match, a lot of times, the only, legally, the only option we have from a revenue stream is the general fund. So we will use general fund money, the surplus, um, to fund capital improvement projects, matching grants, those sorts of things. That's been what it's populated for this year as well.
And when FEMA pays us the $3 million, where's that gonna go?
Back in the general fund, sir, back in our reserves, back in our reserves, in the general fund. Our reserves are in the general operating.
Put that general fund in your reserves and get that over with?
Yes, that's where it will, will go when we receive it. Yes, sir.
Before FEMA reimburses us?
Excuse me?
Can we take that general fund and put it in our reserves in case we have a storm? Now, today?
Well, currently, the, the way your budget is drafted now, um, the surplus money in this year, um, is allocated to debt service and capital improvement program. Um, now, if as we move through the budget process, if, if there's additional surplus that is calculated, we would look to council to see how to handle that.
We have so much more in this year than last year. How can we, how can we just spend that, or what? How can we can't just fill our reserves up?
Lisa, would it be fair to say that that money that we say is sitting there, majority of that's all already been allocated to projects that we've approved? It's not money that we have.
Not necessarily.
Doing nothing. That's money we've already.
It also gets calculated into the five-year plan.
Yes, the capital improvement program and the debt service for the next, the next five to 10 years your CIP goes.
Fair to say we're managing our budget properly?
Uh, yes, but in my experience, yes.
And how much is the rollback rate? How much would that generate, the rollback rate?
I would need to refer to my notes with that. I didn't bring that up here. I would need to revert, refer to my notes to, to get that. I'm not sure.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you. Um, really good job, Lisa. Uh, boiling down, I actually, you might wanna stick around, 'cause I have a question. Um, I appreciate that we were able to boil down pretty dense, uh, content the way you just did. That was helpful.
Thank you, sir.
There was one thing that I did neglect to, and I brought it up at previous meetings, but I neglected to bring it up the other day, uh, when we were at the budget workshop, and it was, I, I asked for the $100,000, uh, in an out year for Marni Fields for the, for the light, for the, for the, um, the power lines, right? I also had mentioned previously, but not at the last meeting, so I'm not sure that was included. I, I wanted to do a, a hundred K placeholder, and it can be for an out year, so it doesn't affect the budget, but just to show intent that we wanna do a similar look at the electrical lines west of 41 on Beach Road. So, where we have the electrical lines on Beach Road, um, looking at what the cost might look like to put those under, uh, like we did downtown, because it made downtown look so good. Obviously, it's gonna be a lot more, but that's, I just, if we can put the money in, we can show the intent, and then, once we get with FPL and figure out what it would cost, then we can figure out, you know, who we can get money from, 'cause there's a lot of buckets that we could pull from for this, resiliency, um, public safety, uh, traffic, there's a lot. So from a federal and state level, I think we can get some money, but I think first and foremost, we should, we should put something, uh, in there to show intent from our side. And like I said, I don't need to affect this year's budget, but put it in so we can start the legwork with FPL to see what that might look like. So what I'd be asking for is a hundred K in an out year, if you guys are okay with that, for underground wires on Beach Road west of 41.
Um, if we can make a recommendation that would go to the 2029, 2030, that would not impact, um, the five-year capital plan at all?
No problem with that.
I don't have a problem.
And if we find something sooner, great, but at least we can kinda show that we want it, same as the soccer fields, we can show that we wanna do something over there. Other than that, um, great job. Thank you. I, I'd recommend we move.
Lisa, I don't know if this is an appropriate time, and I've discussed it with Arlene, but we waive permitting fees for storm damage after Hurricane Ian, which amazingly, in another month will be two years. But I think we should start discussing at the time that we're gonna sunset that waiving of those fees. I don't know if staff has recommendations, but I think it's time that we start talking about that.
So we have started talking with community development about reducing those fees. What we would probably do is have a recommendation as a, as a step down.
You said reduce, mean, removing the waivers?
Remove, remove the waivers, correct. Reduce the discount. There's probably a step down to that, depending on if there's a recommendation on materials or, um, but a, a lot of that is freeing up now, which originally it was not, but we would probably look for a recommendation on the staging of those permits. There's probably, uh, definitely permits we could bring back the fee sooner than later, and we'd probably be looking at, um, we, we had been discussing January 1 with plenty of notice to everyone.
I was gonna, so we wanna give, what, 60, 90 days notice?
Yes.
That'd be great. But it's time, I think.
A couple of questions, just for edification of the audience. Uh, do we have enough money in the budget to complete the Banyan Tree project in the next fiscal year? Uh, and are we far enough along in the design process to look forward to construction beginning sometime late this year or next year?
Give me just one second.
Well, that was a design-build contract, and I believe the design is ap- is absolutely funded, but we were, I think we will need some cost estimates, too, uh, that you were waiting on to determine if, at some point, we might need a budget amendment for additional funds.
We, uh, yeah, so what we have currently is two and a half million, um, for construction slated for this coming fiscal year.
Yeah.
To answer your question, the, but to answer what Arlene just said, they're developing the design, right, the concept slash design right now. I don't know what those improvements will cost, so the two and a half million is a bit of a, you know, a plug number that we've, we've guessed at, that we think is within the order of magnitude.
Yeah.
You know, it may be a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. We'll know that.
Yeah, when they're gonna have the design final.
I think as we come into the fall, we'll have a final design and a construction number in front of you.
Well, one thing important to note is, one of the reasons why we always recommend the unassigned fund balances, we try to do the best math that we can on these cost estimates, but depending on where the actual, uh, when we actually get the final cost, there usually is an adjustment we ask you for, very similar to the ball field projects. I assume it's gonna be similar to the soccer fields. Until we get into the ground, the, the old 41 project, where we found little surprises. So until we actually get the project going, that is another, um, safety net that you all have as your general fund unassigned balance for those projects.
Okay, one other question is, uh, where are we at with respect to the work with DPC on the Lyles Plaza area, what we're gonna do with that?
So, so we did get an initial scope. Um, priority-wise, we've been dealing with FEMA right now, and we also have a vacant position for a special project coordinator. So we're gonna be working on trying to recruit for that position, um, and then they would be the lead in charge of working with DPC and coordinating with community development, so.
Do you see, were, any progress on that, there, in the next fiscal year, or is?
Yes, in the next fiscal year, for sure, yes.
All right. And then I got a request of council to, you know, I think we heard a, a great presentation from Karen Gustafson in terms of, you know, what, uh, the Benita Springs Senior Center is doing for a, a number of our residents, especially the elderly who have lost their partners and, uh, our need of, uh, you know, s- social networking opportunities, programs, and hot meals. And I would simply ask that somehow we add $15,000 in the budget to support the activities of the senior center. So I would ask for your support on that.
The problem, problem you have is, when you do that for one, everybody else is gonna line up. And how do you separate one from the other? And traditionally, we've, we've not done this. If, if we do it, you're open the floodgate. And it's gonna go a lot more higher than 15 grand a year or two.
Well, you know, I think that's part of the reason we're elected and part of the, part of our responsibility to figure out what's right. You look at how many people are affected by the actions that were taken, and try to make a decision. So, you know, I lea- you know, I just leave it up to your own judgment and conscience. I think it's something we can do, so. Just consider it. Moving along. Have anything else, there, city manager?
I, I do actually, but I just wanna confirm. So, um, with those adjustments that we've just discussed and the presentation, um, that will be the, that will be the budget that we provide for you for the tentative vote, um, and then we'll continue, and that's what, so what we provided today will be added to the budget.
Okay. Chris's item then be added in, or?
Well, I, I was discussing what we presented. Are, you, you've asked for consideration, so I would imagine you would want to discuss that again at the next.
Right.
Meeting.
I, yeah, if you come, I mean, are, so we can approve everything as is today, he can come back with the request.
Right. Yeah, after you give him time to think about it, and we can talk.
Okay, so the items presented by the finance director, we will move forward with, including the capital improvements budget, um, and then the, I, I did see nods for the 100,000 and the out year for undergrounding, uh, u- utilities. Okay. Um, the, the only other update that I wanted to provide is, um, we are continuing to work with FEMA. I did want to, uh, provide some information to the public. They did receive a letter of communication from FEMA. I understand it was a lot of confusion, and I also understand that some folks got letters who, I've been, from the other, over a hundred calls, received in two days. Some folks got letters that actually don't carry flood insurance. So there could have been an issue of they were past policyholders, or the address was past policyholders. But I did want to let everyone, uh, know, we continue to work on the two steps that are required. One is an interim plan, remediation plan, that we are working on with FEMA. That is due September 17th. That is the first step. Um, we've had multiple meetings on that, and we are working with our consultants and the representative from FEMA who've been provided to us to work with directly. And secondly, we have a November 18th date, and that is the date that was provided to, uh, the, the residents in, in the letter. So as we continue to work through that process, um, we have provided, the city has provided, uh, signed by city manager, to the residents who we believe, who we understand received a letter. So I know this sounds complicated, but you may be receiving a letter from the city, um, and you may or may not have flood insurance. We are utilizing the list that was provided to us from FEMA. We've done the best to cross-reference that list with the current property appraisers list of, uh, ownership. So we, we've, we've provided that within our own, um, cross-reference prop, but we're doing the best we can, so you may be getting a letter, uh, two letters. Uh, but we felt it was more important that we also provide that letter to the public, should they have received correspondence from FEMA. And we continue to plug along.
Anything else? That's it? Okay. Manager and council's report. Fred, you gotta start us off?
No, I'll pass.
Okay, Nigel?
Yes, sir. Um, a couple of things. One is, uh, we had the TDC meeting, and, uh, not particularly surprising, revenues are still down, but, um, it seems like things are starting to plateau out. The, um, rental revenues are starting to come back. Um, and I would suggest that if you wanna know what the money looks like and where it comes from, that you go to the TDC website, which is not TDC, it's actually, uh, www dot visit fort Myers dot com. You can see the budget, you can see the money that comes in. You can see that right now, year-to-date, we're down year over year, but again, it's coming back. Um, occupancy rates, which is important, have pretty much, uh, gone up about 1 to 2%. So again, normalization, that means more revenue, which is good for the city and, and good for our business people. Um, the FEMA letter, I will comment, um, I'm grateful for just how intelligent most of our residents are, because in the last three days, I've had four calls, and three of them were really nice calls where people just wanted me to explain to them, because the FEMA letter can be somewhat confusing, but most people have walked through it, and when you realize the number of homeowners that we have, and I would assume that at least half of them have opened those letters and not thrown them away, I think people are beginning to understand two things. One is that it's not the end of the world. Number two is that our city staff and our city has done a hell of a job in dealing with this. We're still gonna continue, so that you all know, this isn't over, but we bought ourselves some time, and our residents seem to be very, very supportive. So I thank you and them for that. Um, Veterans Day, I'm gonna ask council, because I never thought to ask all of you, if you would be okay this year if we moved the start time from 11:00 AM until to 9:00 AM for a couple of reasons. One is, it seems like all the other cities are starting at 10:00, 11:00, and 12:00. That's number one. Number two is, uh, the opportunity for speakers, and, um, as of right now, we could have a very significant, um, band, marching band that would participate in the parade, but only if we started a parade. In the event, only if, um, we could start at nine o'clock. Is anybody opposed to a 9:00 AM start?
Nope.
No?
All right, thank you. I'll, I'll get back to you with, and to staff with what, uh, veterans council decides. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, Jamie?
Um, just a few things. Um, the fire department has canceled the sale on the restaurant, so it's back on the market again.
Oh, no.
And, um, we had the opportunity of attending the Fort Allegra Cities this past weekend, and, um, it was a great, um, great time that we had, and we were able to really communicate and talk with people and get some ideas, and, um, so, uh, really enjoyed it. So I wanna thank everyone for having that opportunity.
Who, who runs the marina where the, the fire department keeps a couple boats at, at Big Ecre?
There is no marina. There's one boat slip that's available for the fire department boat, and they run that.
And who owns that? And who owns that?
They do.
They own the?
They own all of that, mhm.
Okay, I was curious. Yeah, Jesse?
I don't have much, I just, as far as TDC goes, Nigel, I heard that email or the, the website address. Has anybody ever brought up the fact that if?
Does Fort Myers?
Yeah. And maybe they wouldn't be so, so upside down.
I, I would say, Jesse, thank you for saying that, but I guess I'll pick that battle for another day. It's kind of like we finally got people understanding that Love is Keys in Benita Springs and not in Fort Myers Beach. That only took us ten years. But you're, you're right. And, you know, their, their argument, I've discussed it in the meetings once. And basically what they say is, well, people outside this area understand Fort Myers and.
While, while you, we're on that subject, they're going to spend, are you familiar with their spending plan for TDC?
That's what I just directed people.
Their spending plan, not their income.
Well, but if you look on their, the budget, the spending plan is on there.
Okay, well, I'm asking you.
Yes, sir.
I understand they're going to spend a fortune on rebuilding Fort Myers Beach pier.
Well, they're proposing.
They've still got restrooms that, porta potties at Benita Beach, which is a Lee County attraction. When are they going to put some money into Benita?
Let me ask you a question, mayor. Have you called any of our county commissioners to discuss this with them?
No, I have not. I'm asking you. You're supposed to represent us.
At the TDC, mayor. You're our mayor. You're the one supposed to represent our council.
Well, we pointed you, or you volunteered to do that and I'm asking you a simple question. How much are they spending in Benita? How much are they spending on Fort Myers Beach pier?
I can get you those numbers and have those numbers for you. I'll, I'll pull them off the website and bring them to the next meeting or else I'll give them to staff, so you'll have them within the next forty-eight hours. But the pier, they're still discussing whether they're going to move it out further and make it larger or whether they're going to bring back the old pier and maintain, but the distance I believe is like another a hundred and eighty feet out.
Yeah, it's a lot of money, but my question is for the regional park that next to Doc's Beach House.
Yeah.
Has ten porta potties that they're pumping out and they got the restroom all fenced in now for two years. Can't, you know, isn't that part of TDC's tourist development money to be spent on the tours?
No, sir, that's part of the county.
Mayor, at the last meeting, I think we discussed this and we were going to have outreach to Lee County to get some answers for us. We discussed it.
Correct, that, that is the responsibility of Lee County, not the TDC, unless they were to look at an enhancement project or to make other additional improvements than what was already there, then there might be a partnership with the TDC. We've had preliminary conversations with Lee County regarding the, the actual beach accesses and some additional improvements and maybe that would be an opportunity to ask for funding from the TDC, but the, the repair and build back would be Lee County, not TDC.
Can we write them a letter that say you ought to clean up the, the park? Lee County should do something with the regional park next to Doc's Beach House there.
Let us start with some general communication first and bring back a report or an update. They may already have a timeframe to be able for us to report that back to you. And I, I do believe you all have, you all individually have the ability to reach out to the county commissioners too.
And just to be clear for the public, TDC money is not for maintenance. It's for projects.
And that's all I have.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks, Jesse.
Okay, well, let's see, Jesse's, me, Chris? I'll talk next. Just as Jamie said, we attended the Florida League of Cities. Couple of interesting observations in terms of the seminars I had, I attended. While Florida is growing overall, the neighboring counties of Cuyahoga, Miami-Dade, Broward and Palm Beach have net migration losses. And the reason they have net migration losses is affordability of housing. And people are moving out, not necessarily out of Florida, but they're moving into north central Florida places and even Charlotte County. So you're seeing big, you're seeing significant population gains in Port Charlotte, Northport, all the way up to Gainesville, over to Ocala and over to Jacksonville. This is both in terms of the younger workforce, which is trying to find housing and the younger workforce is more mobile than it used to be because they can work remotely. And it's also true of retirees who are trying to downsize in terms of the size home they have and they can't find it in these counties. So one of the things that we need to be aware of is that migration and if we want to capture some of the workforce that that presents for Benita Springs, that opportunity, we're going to have to take a look at how we work with developers in building the kind of, of housing, the kind of homes that the younger people want. The younger people for the first ten or twelve years after high school or college because they're not getting married until they're thirty. They're not having kids until the average age is thirty-two. So there's a ten or twelve year window where they're looking for housing for themselves. And we'll have to look at ways in which we can keep our retirees who want to move out of the bigger homes they have into something smaller. So this gets back to the discussion about accessory dwelling units, permitting for housing that's manufactured in a factory that, you know, typically the permits, you got to pull a permit for electrical, got to pull a permit for plumbing and so forth. We got to streamline those rules so that we can get manufactured housing in. So it's just a strategic challenge that we're going to have to deal with as a council going forward. I just wanted to report that. Okay, my turn. Seven eleven on Benita Beach Road was at the ribbon cutting. They're open, so you don't, it, it's a long way from the seven eleven on Imperial all the way to Fort Myers Beach without a gas station, so they're, it's finally opened. It's two years and they've been working like crazy. They had a grand, a ribbon cutting last week and the councilwoman, Carr and I were there. So that's a great improvement for all the people who live on Tarpon in that neighborhood. They don't have to go out on the beach road to get to the gas station. And I guess the American Legion is going to be open again pretty soon. And with that Imperial road being improved and these sidewalks, a beautiful street. We did a wonderful job with that. And so that neighborhood is going to come back. So that's about it for me. Public comment.
Good morning. For the record, Mike Gibson, president of the Downtown Alliance. I just wanted to thank Councilman Fullick for bringing up the building permit fees. During the presentation earlier, I noticed that the building permit fees fund has been dropping a lot. It was planned to do that because of the excess that was in there. But now it's getting pretty low and in addition to the fees that you recommended, we might want to look at the other ones that were previously reduced too, just to kind of have a soft landing with that fund. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, City Council. My name is Kyle Moran. I maintain a home on Felts Avenue here in the city. I spend a lot of time in the, in the downtown. I just wanted to thank you all for the discussion that you had today about the much-needed renovation of the Banyan Tree parcel. That's really the town square of the city and it's in disrepair. And we'll never have a great downtown when our town square is in disrepair. And so that's a great priority and I'm glad that you're addressing it. I also heard some earlier comments, both from the public and from the dius about the rail-to-trail project. And there are some really key misperceptions that are impacting that project. One, it's not just a Benita and Astero project. That is a project that when connected with other public rights away could extend from the Tampa-Sarasota area all the way to the southern reaches of Cuyahoga County. And it's so vitally important that county leaders in particular, and thanks too for the discussion about the lack of focus on the southern part of the county that we often see as represented in the TDC's Visit Fort Myers campaign. There's a lot more to this county than just Fort Myers and Benita Springs alone represents roughly ten percent of the population and about fourteen percent of the tax base of the county and is all too often not getting its fair share. But this is, this rail-to-trail project is a real benefit for all county residents. It's a real benefit for people outside of the county and for really all Floridians. There are other misperceptions too about that project. I think the way that it's been conveyed in the community so far has led to a misperception that it's going to happen. And it's far from happening and that's really key for us to correct because the benefits are very significant. They're real safety benefits. It will reduce net, net accidents. The real community health benefits, the real recreational benefits. It will stimulate and support higher levels of economic activity. You can see this across the nation in rail-to-trail projects that, that have been put in. It will improve drainage. It will improve evacuation routes. It will lead to higher property values. It will lead to increased tax revenues, a higher tax base. We don't have to just solve our problems by raising rates. So there are some real public benefits here, but there are also some downsides that could be avoided. That corridor is under agreement to be sold for roughly three hundred thousand dollars an acre. Good luck trying to find per acre pricing on the west side of seventy-five for such an attractive price. And that's a very strategic contiguous corridor that in the hands of a private owner focused on maximizing profits could represent some real downsides for the public. So it's not just what we stand to gain, it is what we stand to lose if the right thing doesn't happen there. And we need help from outside of our city to make this happen. And not just from Astero, but from the larger county agencies, from state and from, from the federal level. And it's so important for us to have a plan to correct these misconceptions, right, to make sure that citizens understand that this is not an inevitability and that we need to, you know, be working with these larger government agencies to make this happen. It's a once in a lifetime opportunity. When it's lost, it's lost and if it's traded by a willing seller into private hands, it could represent a huge risk for our community, given all the, the crossings and so forth. So again, we really appreciate, you know, your great attention to the issues, you know, impacting the city, you know, in that downtown. But this rail-to-trail project is really key as it was mentioned before, it's government time and it's ticking down. Time to take action. Thank you.
I'm Ron George from Little Hickory Island and I was just going to communicate that I've tried to contact our county commissioner about the issues on Little Hickory Island and the accesses and I, I made two attempts. The first attempt never got a response and that, I felt unusual because usually our county commissioner is fairly good at responding. And then I made a second attempt a couple of months later and then part of, I, I had a whole list of issues I asked them to address. They did respond to one of the total list and it wasn't a very good response. And they also commented that my previous response had gotten lost on their end. So I, I would like to see if, if the city can at least maybe get some answers from the county and it also is, I think, up to us residents to continue to contact our commissioner and, you know, I know we got one commissioner that's ready to leave office and I also, in fact, in my efforts, contacted one of the candidates and didn't get a response from him either. So anyways, appreciate, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, we have another meeting September fourth at five thirty and anything else, we're adjourned.